We will be rolling downhill tonight in the words of our city manager, so I'm gonna stick with that. We've got proclamations, mayor's awards, and citizens academy graduations, so those of you that are interested in citizens academy, they'll be opening up again soon, so make sure you take advantage of that. Brings us to number four, it's a public hearing, consideration of an application for housing sustainability grant for the Iowa Economic Development Authority, Community Development Block Grant Program.
This is a program we've applied for in the past for a couple of different neighborhoods. We applied last year up off of Osborne, we did not receive those funds, looking to apply this year. Talking with regional planning commission in the South Hill neighborhood, trying to pare off some of our other work in the area to build a stronger application and then some of the work that South Hill neighborhood has done as well. This is owner occupied rehab grant where initially we can apply for up to six homes. For rehab, up to $24,999 in hard cost improvement to their home. There is some additional technical service costs and temporary relocation costs that can be factored into that. So the total grant would be $232,994. If those six homes are completed in a timely manner, we can apply for one or two additional homes, just based on the timing of the grant. But this must benefit primarily low and moderate income persons. Currently, the wage thresholds are 80% of the median family income for Des Moines County, so one individual is $38,000. A four-family household would be $54,250 to qualify for the program or under. And looking at the area between, somewhat between Locust and South Street, Ninth Street and Fourth Street. Again, this has to be owner occupied, cannot be a rental property. They have to reside in the home and meet those income qualifications, but we feel with some of the investment in the area and then some of the work South Hill has done, hopefully this will be a strong application. The city's match towards this is the $10,000 that's contributed to the Great River Housing Trust Fund. We've done that over the last few years, so that's something that we've done in the past and using that as our local match, that $10,000 contribution. So any questions on the program or application? Again, this is just an application to IEDA for the funds.
Right on. Counsel, are we good on the application?
Mm-hmm. Only question I've got is, who, how do we decide the zone?
We look at number of rentals in an area, we have to pre-qualify. It used to be you could just apply for an area, now we have to pre-qualify, get individuals in a pretty compressed area. So we, in this area, looked at what else is going on in the neighborhood with the sewer separation, the program around Grimes with the green infrastructure, some of the work that South Hill has done. But it is just trying to build the best application and then find an area where there's not so many rentals that you're not gonna get qualified individuals to apply. So we did a, there's a windshield survey done as well, trying to determine how many homes would qualify just based on exterior appearance, granted there could be interior work done as well.
Groovy?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Brings us to number five, public hearing, consideration of transit grant application, Mr. McGregor.
I have to apologize in advance for every item that I basically have on tonight. I had a PowerPoint presentation that did not transfer onto a flash drive, so I have the memory, but I will have the stuff for the next meeting for sure.
Okay.
This transit grant is an annual funding transit grant application for federal and state transit assistance for operating. And also part of it is the transportation improvement plan or the TIP, the capital plan for the state. The FTA and STA funds were up fairly significantly. The FTA was at $453,000, where last year it was kind of in the lower 400s. The state is at the $247,000 range, which is up quite a bit overall from the last couple of years. The capital plans, we submitted four buses with this year's roster. It doesn't mean we will be funding them, but if you don't submit it, you won't be able to get it funded from the DOT. So we always submit as many buses as we can in hopes that one of them catches. I can't officially say it because we don't have the grant agreements in hand, but two of the buses that were on our TIP, bus 725 and 26, which are '09 era buses, are scheduled to be replaced here, so we should see some sort of a contract here in the next month from the DOT. But it's good to see that the funding sources from the DOT is up, which helps bring down the liability for property taxes.
Right on. We like that.
Good memory, too.
Was I close?
Yeah, that's very, they're very good, so.
We're really proud of you.
Likely, likely to know what you're talking about.
We good?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Brings us to number six. Public hearing in which is consideration of plans and specifications of the 2019 Recplex Road Extension Project. Mr. McGregor.
This project is, is the RISE project and along with that Broadway extension. It is phased in different sections, as you remember from the RISE grant application. The RISE office will only pay for opening up to certain parcels. So in my lovely picture of the diagram, it shows westbound from West Burlington Avenue to just, just where there's a section line of one of the parcels, that is a RISE-funded section of the roadway. The rest is, is on the city. The grant that we received from the DOT is $418,000. The rest of the project is all covered by TIF. And that is, the estimated project is 1.41 million, and that includes engineering and design, and construction observation. So the remaining, the million dollars or so will be covered by tax increment financing.
Any questions?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred thousand.
Thanks for the correction, James, smarty pants. Counsel, were groovy on that?
Groovy.
Thanks, Nick. Number seven is a public hearing, consideration of the plans and specifications for the 2019 Dankworth Park Pool Improvement Project. Mr. Tisdale.
This is a project we've talked about for a little bit now, the bubble installation at the Dankworth Park Pool. Excuse me. This would include removal and replacement of the concrete deck and fencing around the existing pool, including a footing for the bubble, upgrades to the existing pool house to condition it for year-round use, including mechanical, electrical plumbing. So that it can have year-round use to accommodate the bubble. Storage building construction and vestibule construction to connect the pool to the bubble. Couple images here. This is the, from Arizona, the bubble package. So the pool house is here off to the left, a lot of the storage building down here with some of the mechanicals. Would include new decking with a footing for construction of the bubble. This is kind of just smaller scale bubble than what's out at the Recplex, but would cover the entire pool area, not including the pool house. Pool house is not a conditioned space at this time, so that's the requirement to do some insulation, some mechanical work in the pool house. Make that suitable for year-round use. The bubble will go up in the fall and come down in the spring, the city will still operate the pool in the summer. That'll be the requirement of the LEC. Engineer's estimate for the project is $225,000. Looking to go to bid after approval by council with a pre-bid meeting on April 22 at 2 at the pool. And bids due back on May 7 at 2 at City Hall. Start date would not be until August 26 after completion of the city's pool season, with project completion slated for November 1 of this year. Looking to have one prime bidder for the project. There is quite a few different components to the project, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, concrete work, et cetera. The pool bubble will actually be owned and maintained by the swim club, that's part of the lease, so that's not part of this project. That's something they purchase on their own and maintain ownership of it. I guess this is a city project based on this being a city facility, making improvements to a city facility. The cost to cover the project is raised by the Southeast Iowa Swim Club, so it's not intended that its city funds would require payment of the, to the city of Burlington for the cost of the project by the swim club prior to award of contract. So we have that on hand, including contingency costs for that. I've had discussion with Wood Stores, with US Bank, who's working on the project. And then we have Ryan Ritter here with the swim club, if you have any additional questions.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Ritter? Do you guys have any questions?
I had a question, but I think Eric answered it. So the pool bubble and all this work is 100% funded by the Southeast Iowa Swim Club? Thank you.
The utility costs?
For the lease during their operation is by the LEC, which is most LLC.
Okay.
So during the non-use of the city, it's completely operated and paid for by the LEC at that time.
Okay.
We did have some contingencies in the, or notes in the lease, if there's a failure or some equipment that over $10,000, that'd be a discussion with the city council, but they pay all utility costs during their operational years.
Okay.
You guys good?
Who's, who's providing a construction oversight?
That'll be a few different individuals, Larry Castner, building inspector, and Brad Selby, recreation manager, will be the primary ones from the city's standpoint, and then working with Ryan and their group on their end and the contractor.
So you feel comfortable that you're gonna get what you need done for that?
Yeah, there'll be a lot of coordination. Larry do typical construction code enforcement on the property and Brad will be the primary eyes and ears on the site. We also have Ryan Gorley out there, who's a certified pool operator in the vicinity if something comes up, and I'm sure I'll be out there as well. So that's, it is a big project, a lot of unknowns, just with going into an existing facility and tried to address all of them upfront, but I'm sure there'll be some that arise as you get into the pool house and underground, taking up the concrete and hopefully lines are where we hope they were and expect they were. But as we've seen with a lot of the renovation projects, there are some unknowns that arise and want to be able to address those appropriately.
Eric, one question I've got is, in the winter months with snow and whatnot, who's gonna be responsible for making sure that those areas are serviced and the snow's removed and upkept through the winter months, when it's something we don't typically take care of right now?
I guess we do our normal snow removal, that's something we've talked a little bit about, but I don't know.
And the reason I ask is, with the bubble out at the Recplex, one of the comments, I went to a tour there a couple of weeks ago, one of the comments he made was, they were surprised by the amount of snow debris that was around the facility that had to be removed on a daily basis when it did snow. So I wanted, wanted to know if that was something that was gonna fall on us or not.
We would do our normal snow removal, we're not gonna be out there on a Sunday afternoon at 10 o'clock at night, that'd be up to them to do that. I guess we'll have our normal hours that we do storm removal, just like anything else, but anything outside of that, they'd be responsible for.
Okay, thank you.
I had one more question for Ryan. So the swim club funds the pool and the maintenance of it, is it ever gonna be open for public use or is it just for the swim club?
It's, it's planned to be open for public use, it's a little, how is that gonna work? We're still trying to figure all that out. I know how it works in Cedar Rapids, but it's a little bit different situation here. So we do plan on having public swim, definitely on weekends. And during the week, we're trying to fit in like an open swim, but I'm not, we're still in the workings on that. I can't tell you exactly how it's gonna work yet.
Because it could be a potential moneymaker, you know, if people wanted to lap swim or something in the winter.
The lap swim is the easy part, just open swim is the hard part.
Yeah, it's a more difficult with lifeguards and stuff, sure.
Yeah, because lap swim, we're already gonna be set up for lap swim with lessons and practice going on, and they can get work at the same time, but open swim's a little bit different animal, so.
Okay.
We're still trying to figure it out, but yes, our plan is to have it open more than just for swim team. It's, the intent is to have it open year-round for the community, so.
Okay, thanks for working so hard to raise all those funds, that was a lot of work. Thank you to you and your committee.
Yeah, we're close to done at least.
Yay, thank you.
Are we feeling groovy?
Feeling groovy.
One note on that, the LEC does pay the city a monthly lease payment. We did have a resolution where we pay that back, not immediately, but starting in March of 2020 as a contribution towards the deck improvements, so.
Right on. Number eight, it's a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance, implementing various sections of chapters. Thirty-four Human Rights Commission, the Burlington Municipal Code, it's first reading on that, Stephanie.
Sure. So I'm the liaison for the Human Rights Commission, so we're just updating some of the language and changing the quorum amount for this group. So you can see in your packet, the language that has a strike through is what we're removing. Basically, there was some language that we did some investigating, which we don't. If somebody calls me with a complaint, I read them, the Iowa Civil Rights Spiel about discrimination and what's qualified, and then I give them the toll-free number, the local number, and the website. All the complaints are handled up at the Iowa Civil Rights Commission level. That's where they have the attorneys and to do the proper investigation. So you can see our group is mostly for education, we just have a small $1,000 budget. We do meet, right now we're meeting every other month. In the ordinance that had that, five members needed to constitute a quorum, and we only have seven. So we struggle to have a quorum. So I wanted to get that more in line with most commissions, that if you have seven members, four, the majority is a quorum. So I'm changing that to four instead of five. And like I said, just removing, I strike the language that said anything about investigations, so. This has been reviewed by Patrick, our attorney, and he gave it the green light.
Any questions? All right, thanks, seven. And thank you, thank you, Patrick, for the green light, we like to go. Number nine, resolution approving loan agreement authorizing the issuance of $4,800,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2019A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. James?
This is a follow-up of the last 85 times that we've talked about this topic for borrowing for this year's CIP items. With the bond sale that occurred last week that Travis went through, this is a resolution essentially approving the repayment schedule with the, you see the principal amounts that are due each year, the interest rate that's earned or due with each of them, and then the annual debt service payment is listed towards the end of the document to accomplish paying the principal and interest for each year. This approves us, well, this puts in place the authority for us to make those, cover those repayment schedules based off of entering into this bond agreement.
Okay, guys, for the 84th time, do you got any questions on that? Okay. Number 10 is a resolution approving city council chamber AV update with Tri-State Electric Communications. Rich? Stephanie?
So this is a follow-up you'll see in the memo. We came to you back in September, we had gone out and met with three different companies to have them look at our council chambers for improvements. So we kind of took a little, you know, decided on the proposals, what were the things we liked. And in my memo, you can talk about, we wanted to get the new cameras. We're gonna make this place simpler to operate, where maybe you can be up here and operate the cameras. We decided to get a new projector that will be brighter, to keep that screen though, and get two 70-inch TVs, and you can see Rich up there and.
How did you do that, twice?
Marcy did the Photoshop of putting that up there, but that's kind of where we're projecting the TVs to go, and that they could swivel if we really wanted them to face out this way or if we, but that's our creative work, yep. So Exhibit A shows you the three bids we did get back, we went out to bid with the equipment that we wanted, the system that we wanted. We got the bids back as of March 8 from Conference Tech, Tri-City Electric, and Communication Innovators. They all have specialty in doing rooms like this, so that's exactly what we wanted. So we are recommending, it went through our IT steering committee. Rich really went over the equipment with a fine-toothed comb to make sure we understood what we were getting and what's in the proposal. And we're really comfortable with Exhibit B, the Tri-City Electric proposal. They've proposed $31,059. There will be more expense, there'll be some things that we're responsible for getting. We also are in constant communication with MediaCom and trying to work out getting that signal better. So they want to set up a meeting with us. One of the things that's come out is, right now, well, I'll let Rich talk about this, it's out of mind.
Well, right now, they're proposing that they want to install fiber and then charge us monthly for fiber to get the signal back to them. But we think we can probably do it, that would be like if we wanted to broadcast in high def, but I think we can maybe do it on the same existing infrastructure and just be in standard def digital. But we would only be broadcasting that on the digital channel, which is 125.5 or whatever the channel is, not on Channel 17, but all MediaCom subscribers should get both of those channels now. They would just have to get used to tuning into the one digital channel rather than the analog channel.
And that doesn't cost us any money to just make that switch and see if the quality gets better, so.
We don't want the quality too good till after I get off the counts, we don't want to scare anybody, so take your time, bro, take your time.
But we still are working on that, again, we're trying to get some cost estimates for this fiber to even see if it was something we want to do, we just, it sounds expensive.
Isn't one of the other companies downtown are doing fiber optics right now?
Well.
I thought there were a couple of first.
We have to be on the right fiber that goes to the right destination.
Okay, I didn't know if they were anywhere close to us.
So like Danville Telecom doesn't have fiber, I mean, don't they just run fiber?
Well, that would go to Danville Telco, and we need this to go to MediaCom head-end, correct?
Okay.
Well, what I was meaning is switching service. Is it, would there be an advantage to switching service if, if they have fiber optics?
It's, it's not a matter of fiber, we already have fiber to this building. The problem is if we want to stay broadcasting on MediaCom, getting a quality signal to them, and it's not.
Oh, because we broadcast on MediaCom, that's where I was, that's where I was.
Correct, so we're gonna broad stream it to the internet through our existing fiber, just like we do today. But if we want to maintain broadcasting to MediaCom customers, we have to get a quality signal to them, to MediaCom.
So Rich, when we stream, then that will, could be a higher def?
Yeah, that should be resolved here with this. But then if we also want to improve the signal to MediaCom, we may have to make some changes, and that's where the extra room in our budget may go.
Thank you, I lost that thread, appreciate it.
Okay. We're good?
It's below budget, good job?
But what we're doing right here doesn't solve all our problems with MediaCom?
No, no.
No, no, this is solving the signal getting out of this room, which will get out of this room to the internet, to our streaming viewers, but not necessarily to the MediaCom viewers, we're still trying to.
And that's because we would need to update the hard equipment, right, in order to be able to get.
If, if we want to stream high def, which we're arguing kind of with MediaCom, standard definition may be adequate. If we can get a quality signal to them, then maybe we don't need to change that equipment. They're suggesting we go to fiber and, and that, but that would potentially incur a recurring cost, which we're reluctant to do.
Gotcha.
Briefly explain what the signal does right now, why it's not very good.
Well, yeah, what we have is, you might see this in your own stereo cabinet at home. You have a whole bunch of different signals, you go from digital to, in a little adapter that changes it to something else, and you've got HDMI, and you've got RCA cables, and by the time you're done, you have all this big mess and the signal's been transformed five times. And that's what's happening here from, you know, the projector to the back, it's transported in one thing, and then it gets switched to a little switcher that's a different type, and we go through a connector. And all those changes degrade that signal, and so we're trying to keep the signal one format all the way through until we get it out of this room, and then it'll get out to the internet as a quality stream. If we can get it to MediaCom without transforming it another time, then that hopefully will improve their signal also.
Real quick, just to clarify.
If it goes to MediaCom downstairs, it's not digital anymore, right, it's the analog?
Well, it'll go to them digital, but they're gonna transform it, yeah.
You have one other question?
I was just gonna say, just to clarify, my stereo cabinet is in my hand.
Yeah, you can remember your parents' stereo cabinet.
Okay, yeah.
He's a show-off, but anyways.
He said stereo cabinet, I'm like, man, what yours is?
Are we good?
He's still rich, I got stereo cabinet.
I'm with you too, man, I'm an eight-track man, okay, good?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, way to come in under budget, too, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Which brings us to our proposed consent agenda. Number one is a resolution approving liens for non-payment pursuant to chapters 99, 100, and 106 of the Burlington Municipal Code. Who's, who's got that?
I don't know if anyone really has that, that's come out of accounting.
Unpaid fees.
So what's happened is, is we've, you know, enacted our new stormwater system. So we have some customers now that had never received a bill from Water Works, they're not on our water system. So, but now, because they have imperious surface in the city of Burlington, they're getting the stormwater bill. And so we've, you know, we don't have anything to turn off, like most customers, if they're not paying their bill, the water gets shut off and then it gets paid. These people have services through the city, but they're not paying their bills. So according to the Code of Ordinances, the way we can try to get payment for them is to put it on their property taxes. So that's what we're doing here, it's similar to what we do with the nuisances. So we're gonna do it annually, we're not gonna be coming every month. But, so these are the fees that have accumulated since we've started. Some of these aren't new, they, like, some people have always been getting, have been getting our, let's say, our trash bill and just haven't been paying it, so now we're actually trying to collect on these where we hadn't in the past, so.
We did find that we had, as we went through this process of doing, implementing the stormwater fees and actually redoing the sewer rates, we went through the whole system and found several customers who weren't receiving a bill for service and had been receiving services. I don't know how many of these might have been in that classification. But they're, the ones that we found that we typically weren't having a bill go out to were ones who didn't have water service, but they might have trash and they might have sewer. And these certainly fit into that kind of category, I have no idea whether they were paying before, but my guess is, is at least one of these is one that, that if not all of them, were ones that weren't receiving a bill prior and should have been.
Some, yeah, had bills that had been paid, I know when I.
I noticed Cascade, now are we treating them the same way we treated Meyer?
Mm-hmm, Meyer's, that Meyer Corporation is Meyer Marina.
Perfect.
So both of them are.
Are on that discounted rate, okay, I just want to make sure everything's square, thank you.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So they have, do we, they have not applied, can we reach out to them and clarify that?
We can, but there's just my two or two that have applied for.
Okay, I will, I'll reach out to them, I know some people there, because they probably don't know, so I'll do that tonight. So some of the, I mean, there's some large numbers on here, are these people aware that they have these?
Yeah, I mean, the letters have been sent out, we've tried collection, and we said you'd have so many days or else we're gonna put this on your property taxes.
So they're aware that they've got these.
They've been receiving bills.
Yeah, they've been receiving bills and then Annette sent letters, so.
All right, that was my biggest concern, I didn't want somebody just to get blindsided with a giant assessment.
Okay.
Thanks for clarification, appreciate it.
Brings us to number two, resolution approving the engineering services agreement with Beanster and Kim for Green Infrastructure Project and Locust Basin. Mr. McGregor?
This resolution would approve engineering services for Beanster and Kim to do green infrastructure work for the Locust Basin. You know, as we've discussed, the Locust Sewer Separation Project, we've talked about using SRF funds, the State Revolving Fund loan to pay for that. As a part of this program, there's, not necessarily a grant, but it's funding available to do green improvements to help with stormwater. As a part of this project, we have received, I think, 10% of the overall figure, which is about a half million dollars worth of work. So upon us borrowing the funds, those funds become available. So the Locust Basin is designed, we're out to bid right now. This, this infrastructure that we have in front of us is not designed yet, and you don't know what you're gonna get borrowing-wise until you actually go out and borrow for the work. So this would, this is a contract up to $101,000 for them to design and do construction administration, which comes to about 20% of what the overall cost is. We would be able to design and inspect it regularly, but we've got a pretty heavy workload and green infrastructure isn't necessarily our forte. So I think it's necessary to look out, work to somebody else to do this work.
Questions?
So on this project, with the Locust, if it's a $5.2 million. So on this project, with the Locust, if it's a five-point-two-million-dollar SRF loan that we're doing on that, we get five-hundred-and-twenty thousand of essentially kind of a grant fund to put towards this.
Correct.
Green infrastructure, the rest of that project would be our cost?
Correct, through, through.
Were, are we using a miscellaneous sewer rehab to cover that, or do?
It probably just, I, I would assume we would have just borrowed for that amount, but.
The other, the, the match?
Correct, I don't know if you're allowed to do that, I, I don't know the details of that.
I think you're probably gonna be covering out a miscellaneous sewer rehab.
Okay. Uh, I, and I guess we've identified some areas in the application of where we're gonna install this, uh, we've talked to the school district, um, at Grimes School. About doing on the, the north side, they have a fairly large right-of-way area and doing a, a bio-retention, uh, cell. And then we've also discussed doing on the, the south side, uh, permeable pavement to, to help the runner, water run off of the, uh, of the parking lot there, so. Uh, they're on board, or they were at least when we, we applied for it, so we will re-initiate that conversation upon the beginning of the design.
As we move forward with, for the, at least at this time, for the foreseeable future, when every SRF borrowing that we do, we're eligible for comparable projects?
Correct.
So, and that, and we'll be looking to do as many of these as we can and as, as we've talked about, how do we go into DNR and talk about working with our consent decree? Doing these types of projects gives us a little bit of, um, clout with them, because we're taking advantage of, of a, projects like this. Uh, and it helps in achieving the same type of goal as what the CSO work is designed to do.
Helps retain stormwater, which is ultimately the, the problem that causes the CSOs, so.
Sounds good, council satisfied? Thank you, Mr. Mac. Number three is a resolution approving Historical Resource Development Program grant application for the Depot renovation, Mr. McGregor.
Good evening, um, I, uh, this, this resolution is a resolution of support, uh, this is not something that was really necess, necessarily initiated by the city. Uh, the Friends of the Depot have, uh, wanted to see the flooring in the great room, uh, be refinished. I had some lovely pictures in the PowerPoint as well, um.
You gonna pull those up, bud?
Yeah, um, so this is an HRDP grant application, that is the, that, that's the current status on the left. Um, and then we had Royal Concrete and it come in and do, uh, that section there. Um, and the, the former Greer's diner space is also to that same condition, uh, it's night and day difference. Uh, it's, it's so much, it looks so much better than what the, the, the current condition of the floors is. So, uh, we've applied for this HRDP grant before, um, as the city for the same space and renovations. Um, this is a little bit different grant, uh, amounts in the projects than what it was in the past. Uh, the, the flooring and the wall enhas, enhancement is, is the majority of the work, is the whole work. Uh, it is a forty-one-thousand-dollar project of which the Friends of the Depot are meeting the match requirement. I noticed in Jared Lassiter through Southeast Iowa Regional Planning put this together. It looked like we, it was they're using our tax ID code, so we will become the fiscal agent on that, from what I understood. It came pretty quick last week, so I just processed it, so I'll have to talk more with them about that, so. Meaning that the Friends of the Depot would essentially pay us of the contract and all the bidding could go out through us. Um, but, uh, you know, a net zero effect on our budget, so.
So the, in the packet, the, it shows the project costs, the HRDP ma, match and cash from Friends of the Depot? And has the breakdown between the flooring and the wall enhancement, those numbers are all correct, it's just the totals?
Yeah, I didn't save it at the right time, I'm having real technical issues, I maybe should need some training on that. The, the total project cost is not what you probably have in your packet, it is, it's the forty-one thousand. Those two numbers, uh, are correct up above the line, but they don't add up to what the total is that I have below.
Right on, okay.
So, uh, I will correct those mistakes and add them to the packet for next week.
And the Friends of the Depot have seventeen grand?
Correct, and if you know, if you see the rec, correct number, which is thirteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, that's all that this match requirement, uh, will ask for.
Okay.
The, the one condition I will say on this is I think it's gonna be a great project, I think that the floors greatly needed. However, upon beautification of this, there's gonna be a different level or standard of care of the floors that's gonna be needed. You know, we have not really truly cleaned probably to the greatest extent in the Depot as maybe we should. And when we have the floors looking like this, there's gonna be added expense on a, on a regular basis.
Any idea what that will include?
Uh, you're gonna, we're gonna have to, you know, mop the floors on a more regular basis. You know, we kind of get away from it now because the floors look dirty, so they probably are a little bit more dirty than, you know.
Some of that'll depend on, I mean, we buff these floors in here and these get buffed a whole lot more than what you standard, standard place will get. You need to, two to three times a year you'll see typically, that's a place that.
Depends on traffic too.
Your traffic there is gonna probably put it a little bit higher. Um, these we do internally, so it's a hidden cost, it's staff time.
Special K, it's a great job.
But if you have to bid that out, it's gonna, I guess it's dollar or square.
Probably could do a deep cleaning type function through somebody else, you know, once or twice a year, but.
Okay.
It's not cheap to maintain these type of floors, but if we want them looking good, then that's, I mean, that's the direction I think we need to head down, but. It's just something that I want you to be aware of prior to getting into that.
We were gonna reach this point at some point anyways, if we continue to put money into that building, so, we're there.
I think kudos to the Friends of the Depot, their blood, sweat and tears has really resulted in a, in a nice arena. If you haven't been to the Depot, just go check it out, it looks nice.
You guys good?
Yep.
Thank you, Nick. We also have, uh, public hearing set for May sixth, it's consideration of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget amendment number one. So that's gonna be a good time, come on out and party with us. You got anything you wanna say about that, James?
We don't have the final document ready, the area I know that we have a bu, that we need to do a budget amendment for, for nothing else, is we did refinance one bond issue. So that's gonna increase our, it, it's gonna inflate our expenditures there, even though it's a reven, uh, uh, revenue in and out. But I, I assume we have a few other categories that we're gonna probably have to make adjustments on, flood expenditures will be one.
You good, James?
Yeah.
All right, what do you want?
Well, I just was wondering, since we have some, we, I'd assume that they're here for that, do we wanna do that before the, the call?
Hey, whatever you say, man, whatever you say.
I'm just asking the question.
Hey, you know, whatever you want, man, you know. Mary Beard? You wanna, you wanna come on us?
Hello, my name's Mary Beard with the Southeast Iowa Regional Airport, and I am just here tonight to, um, ask the council to help protect the public investment in the airport. And the airport land use by updating the airport overlay zoning ordinance and compatible airport land use within your ordinances. So, a lot of times when I receive a call about airport height ordinances, what can be built next to the airport, the first thing that I do, um, Eric, if you could pull up that, uh, PDF for me, please? Um, the first thing that pops into my mind actually is this, this picture of this PDF here and all of the airport zones.
No, I didn't, thank you.
I didn't give them.
Well. There it is, so this is a, this is a document that I use a lot, so when we talk about the zones around the airport, you've all probably seen this before, but. There's, there's, um, many zones and it's within five miles of the airport, of the zones that we look for, so. It actually encamp, encompasses Des Moines County, West Burlington, Burlington and, uh, Illinois, even some of the Illinois side, and then Lee County. So what we're actually looking to do is to bring everybody together and put together some ordinance changes and bring it back to the councils of each one of those entities. Then the next thing I actually do is I look at the Des Moines County GIS site, you guys have all probably seen that, and what that shows is actually the airport, what's called the Airport District. But that's really only the airport property that's owned, so that doesn't take into account any of the zones that's around the airport that we're concerned about. So then the next thing we do is I have an airport master plan, so I go to that airport, airport master plan and I look at it, I look to see what easements we own around the airport. Because we do have height restriction easements all the way around the airport on various parcels. And then I look at this part seventy-seven surfaces to see, okay, where is this, this parcel we're talking about? What surface is it, imaginary surface, does that parcel fall under? So then we can try and figure out, okay, what might the restrictions be on that? So as you can tell, there's many pieces of this that really need to be tied together, and in our current zoning ordinance, they are, they are not, it is not all there. So it's our intent to, um, help everybody that's involved in this process to do airport zoning or planning, whatever the situation may be. To, to get the tools together, so we know, know what to plan for. So the good news is, is that the airport can apply for an Iowa DOT grant for thirty thousand dollars to help us through this process. Um, we can get some updated mapping done, we can provide some other input tools, uh, to do that. The match for us is five thousand dollars, the caveat to that grant, of course, is it will only be reimbursed once the ordinance has been passed. So it's important that if we accept this grant, that we make sure that we're on the same page and really working to update that. Um, the other piece I go to is the city code of ordinances, and in, if we look in that ordinance, it actually references a map from nineteen forty-six. Um, so it's obvious, we probably need to get that updated, so, so that's really why I'm here, I'm just really here to say, hey, let's, let's get, take a look at this and get it together. So a couple of weeks ago, we held a, a meeting with the airport engineer, myself, some board members, members of the development and planning departments from Burlington, West Burlington and Des Moines County. So we just got together and we said, okay, how can we make this happen? So what, what's our plan going forward? So the suggestion was, first of all, it's everybody's goal to make this as easy and a, as we can, make it, uh, easy to read, easy to use. And to have sufficient mapping, so there's a visual out there that people can really look at and understand that. So the suggested plan then is to form a committee, um, we would like to form a committee that would have people from planning departments, uh, maybe people from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Council members, uh, I, I will be going to all three entities, Burlington, West Burlington and Des Moines County, asking for the same thing. Um, then once, once this committee's formed, several meetings probably to get the, to review the ordinance and then get some updated ordinance out there. One thing, what's kind of a pretty simple example of why this is important, um, this is kind of something that happens fairly frequently as far as airport hazards, but if we have a really dry summer. Uh, Hartman Road, you know, can get pretty dusty, well, we have an automated weather system at the airport, we call it the ASOS. And if it gets too dusty, then that throws our ASOS out. And what happens then is that we can, that the pilots use the visibility reading on this ASOS. And if they don't have that information, they can't fly in and out of Burlington. So that's just an airport, an example of an airport hazard that we, we look at, that we think about, that we want to try and protect from. So as a result of all of this, I'm just really asking for three things today, just three. Um, so first of all, any inputs or suggestions you might have on how we can implement this, this project, get it going and make sure that we, uh, get some changes made and get it approved. And then I'd also like to ask you to appoint two to three individuals from the planning folks, um, to our committee. And, um, then I'm also asking for your verbal support of moving this project forward. Um, and I think that's it, so you have any questions for me?
Well, keeper of the airport. I'm, I'm cool with it, I'm, that's, makes sense to me, so.
So I have a few questions, first, could you please explain to me, um, what the effect of what I'm looking at has on things like development or, um, uh, building restrictions, whatever? Uh, I, I'm assuming that the, the blue circles encompass the zone that you, you're referencing, but then the red triangles, I'm assuming there's an impact within those areas as a result of the fact that they're within those zones. So could you, could just kinda explain that to me and then, um, my follow-up question after you're done with that is, what impact will this study have on development or anything within those zones? Is there any way to kind of determine that or look into the future to figure out what, what that may look like?
Uh, I'll, I'll start with that one, because I think that's part of the responsibility that the committee will be tasked with, to review that, to look at the underlying properties, see what's there, see maybe what the impact is. The current zoning that's on those parcels that fall underneath there, I mean, as you can see, it encompasses the whole entire city pretty much. So, um, I, I think that responsibility will fall on the committee to, to try and figure that out and have those answers perhaps ready when, uh, when the time comes, when we propose those changes.
Okay.
And there are actually five zones that you're seeing out there, so depending on, on which zone you're in is how critical that could be. So let's just take, um, the yellow, you can see the airport is the, within the yellow, okay, all of that. That is, um, all airport-owned property, but that's a pretty critical piece, our runway protection zones are in that, that area. So that's not one that, that I think that we would really be concerned of because it's airport-owned property. But then the red triangles off to the end, those are the approach zones, and as you, as you travel out those approach zones, uh, ju, excuse me, approach zones. It is a, um, what's, what's a, what's the term I'm looking for, it goes out and then it goes up, kind of a trapezoid, trapezoid shape.
Okay.
So, um, the further out you go, I think that's, most of those are thirty-four to one surfaces, so every one, every thirty-four feet, you go forward, it's one foot in the air. And you continue until you reach a point where the, the height is, could be obstructed, um, for air navigation mandates.
Okay.
So those are probably the biggest ones, the, uh, the transitional zones are the green lines, and those again are trap, trapezoidal, if that's such a word, um, areas. And, um, so again, it depends on how high that is. Couple of things that we would be concerned about, uh, the Big River Resources, you know, every once in a while will put out a lot of steam in the air. So we certainly wouldn't want a factory close to the airport that would impede the travel of aircraft by something like that. So those are some things that we would just look at, um, let's see, wildlife attractant, so we wouldn't want somebody to put up a big pond fairly close to the airport. Those are a couple of things we'd be concerned about, did that answer everything back?
Uh, it, it does, so after the study's done, then your committee will determine what rules and guidelines will fall within these zones, is that, is that how that's gonna work?
Yeah, actually, the state of Iowa produced a guidebook several years ago, so we'll be using that as probably our, our template.
Okay.
Um, and so it's pretty much standard, they've obviously looked into the Iowa State Code, the federal code and, and implemented that all into the code as well.
Okay.
That's where we'll start anyway.
Okay.
Satisfied?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I'm just looking at, I mean, think about it, you know, the, the business park out there by the Recplex falls within those, those more restrictive zones. Um, you've got a lot of open land that's, uh, prime for development that falls within those zones, so that's why I wanna make sure that, kinda have an idea of what we're getting ourselves into before we dive in.
I got a question for you, Mary. What happens if you build a mile of road? I can tell you.
What is that answer?
You can drive for a mile, but if you build a mile of, uh, airport runway, I can't remember how that was, but that was so sweet, you need to make sure you always open and close with that.
You can.
You killed the punchline there.
I know, I've been ruining them, man, it's been killing them lately, yeah, I mean, literally.
A mile of runway can take you anywhere.
That's right, that's right, but a mile of. It sounded better when you said it that last time, you need to just get, get a bracelet, man.
All right.
So, part of the area that you're looking at would be comparable to, I mean, in those green rectangles around the runways would be comparable to the area that was potentially impacted by the apartment complex that was being looked at?
Yeah, correct.
Would you see this model ordinance being something that would potentially not allow that to be constructed?
It's a pretty tough question, um, so there are steps and there's, there's a, there's a method of analyzing all of those zoning, um, requests or, or buildings, if you will. Um, so it really depends on a lot of things, so one thing that we look at is really what is, is there a co, high concentration of people? Well, sometimes if you have a high concentration of people in Chicago versus in Burlington, Iowa, it's not the same definition. So it's local zoning and, and we, as local, as the local zoning people, need to pay attention to what's right for our community. So I think we would put, uh, into our zoning whatever is right for our community, so it's hard to say how that would shake out.
So who's making that decision?
Uh, we will bring those, those recommendations back to the council and ask for those, um.
Who's, who's, how many, how many people are a part of that committee?
Uh, we would ask for two to three folks from each entity, Burlington, West Burlington, Des Moines County.
So you'll have those six to nine people?
Those six, mm-hmm, and we'll utilize our.
And so, some of your board as well?
Right, and we'll utilize, uh, our airport engineer to help with the technicalities of it all.
I think it would also be important to understand that, well, I think everybody up here is supporting the idea of it, we, I don't know, we're not all saying that we're gonna vote yes for it, just because, depending on what comes back, I mean, I think it's gonna be really important.
Yeah, at the end of the day, we really need to update a nineteen forty-six.
Sure, no, I understand.
Standard map, so.
Yeah, I agree. But at what cost is what we can't figure out at this point. So that's why it's really.
And there is airport zoning in the code of ordinances, so it could be some updating the language, rewarding.
So I guess part of what I want to make sure that you understand for implications on this is you had a request from the airport a few months ago in regards to that project. And if you are too far away or removed from this process, you may have something that doesn't reflect where you want to go. And I don't know where you all as a group want to go with how much you're willing to do for restrictions. As she mentions a lot, some of this is subjective based off of what's appropriate for our area. If you all have, are represented on there, you can carry that. Staff doesn't necessarily do the best job being able to convey this group's thoughts on that.
I would as well. I mean, I don't have a problem being a part of it.
Fantastic. All right, thanks, guys.
That's two. I thought they said three.
Two. You can't have more than two. Eric is gonna want.
What about me? Nobody even asked if I was interested. I really feel like I'm being stepped on.
I'll always defer to the mayor. Do you want?
No, absolutely not.
That's what I thought. So the three is myself, John and Eric, is that correct? At work?
Very good. Yes. Great, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Would it be you or someone on your firm planning and zoning?
Okay.
Are we satisfied? So we can move? Did you have something?
May I? We have another comment here. Oh, we'll need you to.
Step up to the microphone, please.
So everyone can hear.
So the point, I think it's important that everybody understands is.
I'm sorry, have to do this. Can I have your name and address, please?
John Schultz, two hundred R to Burlington.
Mayor's award winner.
We like to think that the FAA will protect those runways and that they won't let anybody build in there that will restrict the classification on those. But they don't restrict what gets built on there. You people do and anybody else that has any control over that. So you can build, we could build literally anything on that, on the ends of the runways. And FAA won't prohibit you from doing that. But they can come in and reclassify the runway then so that certain aircraft, the larger aircraft are not permitted to come in there. So it's gotta be, we need to keep that in mind, that that is not something that we want to let get out of control. And you need to keep consideration on that when we're trying to figure out what goes in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
And just one side note, I doubt that Eric will be the, I guess, it'll be you or your new staff person that starts.
It'd probably be both of us when she starts, just because she'll be new to the process. We enforce and, I guess, update and enforce our zoning codes. We want to be involved in that.
We're good. Okay, Patrick, what are you here for? Come on, come on up.
Nope, no.
No, regarding the manual.
He was excited.
If you guys want to get on out of here, I blame you. Get on out of here. We're waiting for the mayor.
I think you can go ahead.
So one of the, I'll start the, this, one of the things that, from a staff perspective, we'd looked at our council rules and procedures. We have a couple of documents that have floated out there for quite a while. Some of them have rules that, for example, on how we do ordinances and present them, that got, it was brought up that we weren't following the rules on something that we'd established about a year ago. And no one on council had been around when that resolution had been passed and had ever even thought of what that rule said. So with that kind of thought in mind, we wanted to get to where we had a comprehensive set of council rules that was refreshed, brought up to date, asked Patrick to take a look at what we already had and bring it more up to date. And I think you probably used a boilerplate from what you've worked on in other communities as you kind of developed this.
I would say it turned out not really to be boilerplate at all. There were a number of manuals I looked at. It's significantly better than any of the manuals I've seen. It's also somewhat longer. In other words, I think it's pretty well organized and the table of contents is good. So hopefully you can find what you're asking. I'm sorry, what was that?
No, I said it was thirty pages, so it was pretty long.
Yeah, it's long. It includes a lot of things that I think are helpful for a council member to know, especially when you have newly elected council members that may not be totally familiar with the law. I decided to go ahead and put, if I had any doubt, I put it in. Because if I thought an issue ever came up with that, I put it, I went ahead and left it in. And it's longer, it's much longer, I think, than some of the shorter manuals I've seen. So I, if you have specific questions, just stop me, but I just will go over a few highlights of what's in here. First, the Iowa code actually gives the council in Burlington the authority to adopt its own rules of how it wants to conduct itself. And so that's why we're doing this. You don't have to use the same procedures that other communities use. And so I spoke with Jim at length during this process, well, Stephanie and others, about kind of the way you do it. And as long as it wasn't illegal, that's what I tried to mirror in here.
So what did you cut out because it was illegal?
It wasn't anything technique, it wasn't anything illegal. The council, for example, had a habit of holding public hearings on absolutely every ordinance that passed, which really isn't required. It's not illegal. But I list out in here all of the different code sections that govern when you need to have public hearings, for instance. So you can choose if you really want to go through a public hearing on an ordinance that really doesn't require one. It just gives you some information that you can go, you can use. Couple of comments about the manual. One thing I would point out is at page six of the document, under general conduct of meetings, a lot of communities have this, they rigidly adhere to the agenda. And they sometimes think that you really shouldn't deviate from it in any way, shape or form. That's not exactly right. You obviously can't add agenda items that weren't, you know, notice wasn't provided to the public. But the mayor, out of convenience to people in the audience or for the council's convenience, can say, I'm gonna take these issues out of order because I have a person waiting to speak, for instance, or for any other reason that is acceptable to the council, to the mayor. For that matter, the council can by majority vote do that. So you don't need to feel like you're rigidly tied, I mean, that's not what's really required. Chapter twenty, or chapter twenty-one governs all of the notice requirements, but you're not tied to a rigid agenda. I mean, you should cover the items that you say you're gonna cover, but you can cover them in different orders. Supplemental rules, the manual always referenced Roberts Rules of Order. I left that in here. One thing I would caution you against is assuming that Roberts is some kind of a death warrant. For instance, you didn't make the proper motion or, you know, I don't think we, you know, the ordinance isn't valid because of some procedural objection under Roberts. No, okay? You make a legal, you pass an ordinance legally or you pass a resolution legally and you've followed the Iowa code, chances are, nothing you do is gonna be voided because somebody didn't know some esoteric rule in Roberts Rules of Order. Okay, they are intended to be followed for orderliness and make sure it's fair. But if you fall off the wagon, you make a mistake, it's not true that, you know, you'll have a council person that says, you know, I really want to defeat this legislation, so I'm gonna do that by pointing out some rule of Roberts. It does cover the government's structure, but obviously you know that well. That's there just in case, you know, you have new council members elected. Work sessions, one important thing under work sessions, and this is true for council meetings as well, you will get asked questions by the public in the public comment section. And the temptation will be to go ahead and engage and debate. You should not do that unless you look at the agenda in front of you and realize it's on the agenda for that evening. Then you can feel free to have an exchange, go to town. But if they bring up something off the wall that's not on the agenda, if the second you start deliberating, technically you're violating the law. And certainly if you take any action on it, you definitely are. So my recommendation is just be cautious, be polite, say, we'll look into that and we'll get back to you. You know, but don't do anything beyond that. It's a common problem that comes up. Right to the floor, one thing that this goes over is, it's not rigid, but it certainly does give the presiding officer the power to control who speaks and in what order. So always be cognizant of the fact that until Mayor McCambell says, points to you and says, go for it, you know, at that point, you have the floor. But you'll have three or four people speaking at once and it's always important not to allow that to happen. And the mayor has that authority under these rules to control the meeting or the presiding officer if the mayor doesn't happen to be here. One thing about the city attorney, this is at page seven, we try to provide our advice by confidential memoranda whenever possible. And the reason for that is because if I am at the meeting and I deliver advice to you in front of the public, there is no privilege whatever to that advice. There's no attorney-client privilege because everyone else is joining in and listening. So don't necessarily, you should not interpret my reticence about saying anything, giving advice right here in the meeting to not knowing or not wanting to talk about it. It's just that I'm always conscious of that fact. So the best thing, the best practice for a council member or the mayor to do is to say, we'd like to get some advice on that. Would you please provide it? And I'll say, absolutely. And we'll just, if we can, I'd like to move those agenda items down the road to the next meeting. And then you can take action after receiving the memo. That way we don't have to provide our advice to everyone else, including the adverse party who is hearing it, you know? In that vein, also in the manual, later on in the manual, if you have members of the public who are litigating against the city, the first thing they will try to do when they don't think, their lawyer tells them they're not, they don't have a very good case, is they will think, I will do an end run and go straight to the council and try to get the council to do something which no court is ever gonna do. And they will want to get on the agenda. Now, the staff is probably gonna immediately see a red flag, but they will try to contact you directly because you're an elected representative and your contact information is there. Always be cautious about a litigant because you are, you have to take action as a body. Okay, and that's on the, in the manual, and it's pretty well explained as to why that's the case. It would not be good for us if you commit yourself to a position and then you realize, I shouldn't have done that. And we're in the middle of a lawsuit. Because the next thing you know, they'll name you as a witness and subpoena you, which of course you don't want to do. So the polite thing always to say is, well, because you have an attorney or you filed a lawsuit if they're pro se, whichever, until that's resolved, I'd prefer that you handle that through the court system. You know, it's all you can really do if they've gone that far. Or if they're threatening to file a lawsuit. As soon as you hear those words, it would be advisable not to engage in discussion. Formal public hearings are discussed, like I said, at page ten. And there's a whole list of public hearings required prior to enactment of an ordinance and then public hearings required prior to passage of a resolution. They're listed for you in there. And it doesn't mean you can't continue as a practice to hold public hearings all the time when you have ordinances. Some cities just prefer to do that, but these are the required ones. So if you want to move quickly, you don't need a public hearing for something rudimentary, like for example, changing the parking regulations, things like that, that you just want to do in an expeditious fashion. Closed or exempt sessions, remember those require an affirmative roll call vote of two-thirds of the entire council for a closed session. So if you're missing one, you need a unanimous vote to get into closed session. So you always have to remember that. It's a nuance in the code. And I've talked to many city attorneys about this and that's what they require. And it's the entire council, so two-thirds of, for example, it'd be wrong if there's four of you to say two-thirds of four of you is gonna get it done. No, it's two-thirds of the entire council voting yes to go into closed session. And you gotta do it by roll call vote. Of course, no formal action inside the closed session. We always come out of the closed session and approve by either resolution or motion. I noticed here, I should make an amendment at page nine here. It says, all actions must occur by motion outside the closed session. It just should say, by action outside the closed session, because you may also have a resolution to pass rather than a motion. Exempt sessions, when you're discussing collective bargaining, that is an entirely different animal. That's, an exempt session doesn't even require the strictures of chapter twenty-one because under twenty point one seven, it's literally exempt. So if you're discussing bargaining, you don't need to have any of those requirements in chapter twenty-one. It's just an unusual exception. And a lot of times, people don't think that's the same thing and they are, they're totally different. So there's discussions of meeting conduct at page twelve. And we took some liberties here. I mean, I did discuss this with the city staff and these seemed reasonable. We did amend a few things because we thought they were going too far. But this at least gives the council an ability to control the meeting. If you see something on this list going on, the mayor can say, I consider you out of order and I'd ask you to stop that. And if they don't, they can be removed from the meeting because we have the right as the property owner to control our own meeting if somebody's out of line.
Can I do that with the city manager?
If he's out of line, you know, the rules apply. So as far as, as far as the way these rules are, actually, this is a good point because the way these rules are worded, even a council member could be removed. So if you're just out of line, if you're, you know, somebody throws something at another council member in a heated debate or whatever, I mean, the chief can be asked to remove him from the room and it's legitimate. I've actually seen that done one time. The person ended up just voluntarily leaving, the council member voluntarily left because he realized the chief was headed over. I wish it wasn't the chief, it was a subordinate police officer.
Does it need to be the leader of the meeting at that point to make that request?
Normally, the presiding officer would do it. And if the council disagreed, the council could theoretically, they could make a motion and try to override that. And of course, you don't want that. Typically, hopefully that doesn't happen. Ideally, you don't want to remove anybody until, unless it's obvious to everyone in the room that that is out of line and needs to be stopped. There's hearing procedures listed at page eleven, which the main thing is to give everyone a reasonable opportunity to be heard. But you can, you can say, how many people over here do I have that share this exact position? Is there somebody that would like to be elected as a spokesman? You could do that if you had fifty people here and that would be reasonable. Nobody's gonna say, well, that wasn't a fair public hearing. Especially if they all nod and agree that Steve will come up and speak for us. You know, if you can try to make the meeting not last four hours, that's reasonable to do. The presiding officer should usually inquire if there's been any comments in the clerk's office. I don't know if I noticed that you do that here in Burlington. But typically, when there's a public hearing set, people can file objections and complaints with the clerk's office. So a lot of times, that's the first statement that is made. And Kathleen would say, there's been nothing, or there's been this statement from Mr. Smith and I can read it now if you'd like, or whatever. You can, of course, restrict speakers to a limited time. This manual doesn't have like a three-minute limit. Because Jim was pretty sure you probably wouldn't want that.
I took it out.
But you can, if you see a massive crowded meeting, you could do that. The manual does allow that. You could say, because we've got fifty people that want to be heard, I'm gonna limit everybody to three minutes tonight, you know? That would still be a really long meeting and probably a lot of them would back out.
We've been pretty successful, I think, on just reminding the audience not to be redundant, you know, and, you know, come up and say the same things when you get a bigger crowd. And it's, it's been okay. But it's nice to have this in black and white to look at and go back over.
Yeah, and of course, you'll want to review it and get some feedback to Jim following the work session. We can, we'll be ready to modify. There's the ethics, the tenants of the Iowa City, the tenant, the ethics tenants are actually in here. And we put those in just for, I think it's reasonable to include. That's from the ICMA Code of Conduct. And that's at pages thirteen and fourteen of the manual. Couple of things that are in the manual, there's some of these things are suggestions to council members, especially new ones, that reading the packet, of course, is. to council members, especially new ones, that reading the packet, of course, is vital. Knowing the facts is vital because you don't wanna use the council meeting as a fact-finding session. You know, asking, calling the staff up about things that are right there in the memo. Really, the meeting should be for bona fide debate about the matter at hand rather than, "Hey, now tell me again what street this is involving and where is that relative to this streetlight?" You shouldn't, sometimes that will happen because it won't be clear from the memo or you didn't have a chance to come and see the staff. But ideally, that's what you wanna do. And the last thing you would wanna do is criticize staff members who can't defend themselves. This is the ugliest thing in all of public government when you see that. If someone is angry at a staff member and they're, and really, the best thing to do is, if you wanna go down and read the Mariah Act, do that outside the meeting and then get that out of your hand, get that out of your system so that, because they're not gonna be able to defend themselves, obviously, so. Couple of, uh, critical, um, issues, a common problem, um, is the misconception regarding passage of an ordinance or passing it on its final passage. People forget that that's a three-quarters vote of the entire council, which is a pretty high bar intentionally under the code. So, you've gotta have three-quarters of the entire council. So, if you're wanting to get an ordinance passed in, in short order and somebody's out of town or two people might be out of town, you gotta get those folks on the phone and follow the Iowa rule, follow the Iowa law and make sure the public can hear what they have to say. Get them voting from Florida or wherever they are. Because three-fourths is very difficult if somebody's, you know, people are missing. And if one guy, one person's voting no, you know, you, on the ordinance, you may not have enough for a majority if you're down to three. So, um, it's vital that, you know, you think about that if you have vital, uh, matters that you wanna pass. There is an emergency matters section of the code, which I absolutely hate because I'm not sure how far an emergency has to go. If the county, if the city hall is collapsing and we have to hire a contractor immediately to shore it up, we may have to call a meeting with less than twenty-four hours' notice. I think that would pass muster. But just be aware, there is an emergency provision, God forbid we should ever need it on the public notice provision. There's a lot in here and I don't really wanna go through all of it, but there's an entire description of procedures for making motions, um, discussion on motions, limiting debate. Oh, yes, you can even limit debate, people can call for the previous call for the question if it gets out of hand and two-thirds of you vote yes, you're done. And it's a nice thing if the meeting's out of hand and somebody's monopolizing everybody's time. So, a motion to reconsider, how many of you have heard of that before? You ever tried to do that? It's, it's a, it's a, it's all explained at page twenty-one. I would recommend you peruse and review it. If you make an error and you really think you need to look at something, there's a way to do it, but you've gotta do it under that rule, um, that's stated at page twenty-one.
You know, I wanna make sure I read that right, but that's only for failed me, measures, right?
Well, right, um, a motion to reconsider will be only made by a member who originally voted in favor of the measure. So, actually, you could have a motion to reconsider on a, on a motion that passed or a measure that passed if you were on the prevailing side, right? I made an error, I didn't realize what I was voting for, for example, if it's within the same meeting.
True.
Okay? Uh, you, in, in the case of a failed measure, you can do it at a subsequent meeting within thirty days of the original measure's failure if you voted against the measure. In other words, I caused it to fail and I realized I made an error and we're still within thirty days of its passage, you can then come back and do that again.
Does it have to be on the agenda at that point then as well?
You, you'd have to put everything on the agenda, right? Motion to reconsider, failed measure at meeting on such and such a date. And of course, we could assist you with how to draft that.
I can think of an example, Matt, where this actually happened. When my husband was on council, he voted against the animal shelter. Then as he learned more about it, he says, "I feel really bad." Motion to reconsider, any changes, vote. If you need an example.
Uh, we've had the discussion of gender balance in the council before and that's listed in here, just to remind everybody that we have to have that for boards and commissions. You know, that would also apply to appointments to the council as well if we have a vacancy. And we should try to follow that with regard to that. Uh, there are discussions of gifts, there's discussions of...
Let me have you back up on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on vacancy, we should try to follow that elaborate, please, for council. I mean, what really are you saying here?
Well, the problem with that is you have to follow the law anyway on terms of the appointment timeframe. So, you can't get, you can't take ninety days anyway, okay? So, I'm just saying this as a recommendation. The council is not a board or a commission technically, but it's always good practice to try to, you know, if it's a temporary appointment, to try to do that if you can, to try to get gender balance. But we're looking pretty good here, not exactly, but it's pretty good here on this council now, so you wouldn't necessarily have a problem, but, um...
Are you saying that because I'm Western Indian?
He said gender.
Oh, sorry about that. You know, I don't appreciate your negativity spreading me down.
I just said, he said gender.
Please continue, Pat.
Um, and, and, you know, I could go on, there's a lot in here. I don't really wanna take any more of the council's time. I've been standing up here for quite a long time. But do you have questions about the manual or concerns about what you wanna see taken out or things that are missing?
No, I think it, it brings to light some good things, especially if someone's not familiar with running a meeting and things like that, you know, what do you say when you want to make this point? Um, I know that can, that can definitely come in handy for someone who's not familiar with meetings and how they're, should be run and things like that.
It's good, it was needed and we need to start having these, uh, which I believe this came up because we wanted to make sure that when new council members came on, that we had, uh, something hard copied that we could give them.
Just hand it to them, right?
Right on, right on.
You know, and they can read this in practice for what they see coming up. They can, I don't know what to do, but I see it's got a whole procedure here for motions and...
Also, those that are interested in running for council, I think that would be a good way to, uh, to get some information into how the meetings are run. I just think it's, uh, I just think you can't, can't go wrong with that.
I agree.
We good?
So, if anybody has any questions, um, just feed them to Jim and I'm sure he'll, uh, he'll be in touch with me about possible, um... One thing I would note that, that I just saw here on this last page, I had an interesting situation once where the council was literally emailing and texting back and forth between the members during the meeting. And it was noticed and the paper went ballistic about it. They said, "Wait, that's discussion outside, that, the public can't hear what's going on" and that, that is something, it says that in here and I just noticed that. Just to, don't, don't do that. Just ask to be recognized and just say, "Hey, Bob, remember last week when we talked about this? What was your position on that again?" Or whatever you need to say, just say it out loud because doing it surreptitiously is not allowed because that violates the open meetings law.
We don't do that, by the way, Leia, so there.
I don't understand Japanese.
Hey, are we, uh, are we satisfied then?
I have a quick question for him.
Yes.
So, we can't email each other, what if somebody from the audience?
Yeah, they should approach the clerk and say they, with a piece of paper or a, something and say, "I would like to be recognized."
Okay.
If, as, because especially if you're past the public comment stage, the mayor can recognize anybody he wishes on a matter that's on the agenda informally. He can say, "You don't, you wanna speak?" But he's not required to if it's not on the agenda. So, the way to have that happen is not to, you know, if they're emailing a member of the city council, council, the, the council member shouldn't go back and forth with that person. It would be acceptable, I think, to tell the mayor and say, "Hey, Mayor, I, I have this message I just received from this member of the audience." I think that perhaps this person should be recognized. That would be okay, I don't think that violates any rules. It's not the correct way for that to be done.
So, someone from the TV audience texts me something. I need to say, "Oh, I just got this text from somebody in our viewing audience."
You would definitely wanna disclose that that occurred, right? Um, I don't, you know, the, 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 the main thing is that you, you folks should not be having discussions amongst yourselves.
Okay, no, I'm not doing that.
If you receive a message from the member of the public in real time while you're deliberating, that's not really illegal. Even if you responded, that technically wouldn't be illegal because you're not, you're not holding a deliberation with your colleagues secretly. You're just talking to a constituent. That's perfectly fine. And you could lean over and say, you know, "I've received a message from a constituent and I'd like to make a com-" you know, you could ask to be recognized and say, "I just received a message from a constituent, here's my comment." Look right in the cameras and say, "Here's what I would respond."
And sometimes it's kind of innocuous, like, "Oh, I didn't know you guys had a meeting tonight. I can't get out of work, I want you to vote no on this." Sometimes it's something like that.
Well, it could happen, right? And you'd have to take that into account. Um, ideally, they'll get to you before the meeting, but that's technically, that doesn't violate the spirit of the open records.
I didn't think it did, but I wanted to clarify with you, thank you.
Yeah, no, I don't think it does.
Okay.
Everybody else, are we groovy?
This does have, um, is, the request came up in regards to meetings and trying to avoid mart- meeting, ha- having a meeting on Martin Luther King Day. Uh, this specifically lists that as one of those days that we would meet on Tuesday as opposed to Monday.
Good.
If you have any adjustments, uh, as he's mentioned, let us know. I'm hearing pretty much that you're okay with how this document is drafted. Uh, but we'll bring it back at the next, next meeting so that you'll see it with a resolution to, to approve, uh, this. So, you'll have a couple of weeks here to, if there's something that comes up that you, we can make some adjustments if we need to.
And of course, if you, you find something unworkable, you can always do a resolution to amend and just get rid of it or change it too.
Uh, one quick question. Um, was there anything that you would consider to be boilerplate that was removed?
No, I wouldn't, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think everything you had is probably still there, at least in some form. There would be probably some things that were edited because they were unclear.
Or just more defined than...
Right.
And anything that he brought forward with what was suggesting, the only thing that I can think of that we took out was the time limit for comments. Cause it just doesn't seem like one that this council has wanted to consider in the past.
Which is fine, I, I just hadn't read the one previously, so I, I did, I wanted to make sure that comparing it, there wasn't...
It was much, much less complete as this and it was shorter and it was not, there were inaccuracies in it and there were, uh, issues that were just not, not clear.
Okay.
Uh, there is an appendix to this, which is the procedure for election of the mayor, the mayor pro temp, which the Kathleen had and that's been our procedure. So, we just incorporated that by reference in this also so that newly-elected folks will know what to do.
I love it, man. Take a look at that, are we, are we satisfied, council?
Yeah. Very. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, have a safe trip back, man. Uh, next, number two, we'll do implementation of small cellular tower guidelines.
You know, we have a city, uh, city attorney who drafted this and recommended that we consider that and he goes and sits down. But, uh, no, Steve Leidinger drafted this. This is, this has come up with, as you look through the packet and, um, the FCC had, uh, drafted and issued an order that was effective last September for, that regulates, uh, or puts limits on what we're able to do for regulation of infrastructure for essentially 5G rollout, telecommunications infrastructure, replacement of poles, um, their boxes, et cetera. Um, it does allow us to have some level of, uh, rules governing how these boxes are placed, uh, but they are very limited and, and we have to have them done in a way that is uniform and we can live across the board regardless of what comes forward. There has been very little time to try to get ready and adjusted, prepared for, for this process. Um, there have been a few presentations that have been done over the last couple of months and I know that Steve Leidinger from Lynch Dallas attended a webinar on this. Maybe not a webinar, he might've gone to an in-person one. I watched a webinar. Um, that talked about what we need to have for implementation of a set of rules or guidelines for, for the installation of this infrastructure. Uh, one of the key things that came out of that and as you see referenced in the material that's in your packet, uh, from the doggone it, I can't think what the, all I can, it's not small cities. What is it that, cause I haven't looked at this since last week.
We're micropolite to James.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Number two.
Next century cities.
Next century cities. It gives a pretty good background of some of the timing things that need to happen. Um, it, it mentions, and then the attorney's office mentioned, "We have to have the basis of our implementation for this, uh, put in place as of next Monday."
April fifteenth, right?
So, we have to have something that, uh, we can approve by then. Steve put together a packet that we can do, the ten-page document that's included in here. Uh, it talks about, uh, where, where materials can be cited, uh, what kinda materials to use, how to try to, uh, get, get boxes, et cetera, to blend in as much as possible, uh, making sure that we don't compromise our own utility poles, et cetera, uh, in the process of them attaching structures. We can't limit, uh, structures being attached to our infrastructure, but we can certainly put some prioritization of, of order priority of, of how things should be done, uh, which this policy, uh, sets out. Um, there would be some follow-up things that would be recommended after this. You'll see in the packet, there's a resolution that would be used to implement this policy guideline, uh, that's recommended to be put in place for next week. But, uh, there's a, one thing I know is we can put in place of, a fee structure for, uh, the applications, uh, that, that would potentially come in. Um, there's some limitations, well, base, suggested amounts that you don't have to worry, that should put you in a position where you don't have to worry about being legally challenged for the amount. So, uh, that would probably be where we'd be looking at for a permanent application fee as well as the annual fees that would be put in place. But those are some of the details that we can do after, after this as we really develop anything that needs to be done, whether an ordinance changes as well. Um, this, though, gets us in place for at least having a base set of doc, documents that we can live with. And reading through here, um, it does, I mean, if you look at the, what, new century cities? Is that what you said it was? Um, what they had for some recommendations and what Steve put together, uh, it really, they meshed very well. Um, Lynch Dallas is doing this not just for us. I, I don't know how many communities that you're essentially trying to get this policy in place for.
So, uh, we didn't have any time unfortunately because they, they rolled it out rather quickly and the notice kinda came late to all of us. So, we just tried to roll it out for everybody we represent. Uh, because we, every, it could conceivably impact absolutely any community where 5G or small cell is desired. So, what you're getting is, is the best we can currently discern. And I can, I'll warn you now, you'll probably wanna modify it down the road, but it's important to get this into place.
Okay.
So that you, you are in a position to do it. Now, Steve had, has, Steve and I have discussed this and it's probably out of an abundance of caution. You know, the question was whether you would waive your right to regulate if you got, didn't get it done in time and we don't really think that's the case, but just in case, we wanna make sure you do. And then also, if you don't, uh, get them in place, of course, before applications come in and Burlington is a type of community where definitely there'll be people interested in locating 5G here, you would have been, you would have a problem then. So, that's the purpose of the hurry up.
Yeah, and I watched it.
And you're not the only community that's completely taken aback by this at the last minute. It's, everyone's scrambling all over the state, from what I understand.
For the implementation of five G, five G, the, what this'll mean for communications is amazing for the two-hundred-fold magnitude increase in capability, potential capability for carrying capacity. Uh, I mean, there's a big reason for why they're looking to do this, but for a, a company to effectively put in a, a 5G network, they're looking at needing infrastructure every couple of hundred feet, uh, of these mini, mini, uh, towers. of these mini, mini towers and if you have half a dozen carriers that are looking to do that and you essentially have them, each of them needing to put a tower up each block and then a transformer to charge it. You can have an awful lot of infrastructure get placed in the right of way and if there isn't some way to manage it and talk about what's, what kind of setbacks are we looking for, are we trying to get the, them to have an incentive or requirement to co-locate, which this document does? You can end up having just really an onerous impact on our neighborhoods.
I just want to say this, since we're talking about 5G now and we'll get out of the way, I'm totally against the 5G rollout, I think it's a terrible idea, I'd like to lock them outside of Burlington. I don't care how fast the communication gets, I think it's a horrible idea, I just want that document for the record. 5G, 5G me.
Well.
Did I say that good enough, was that strong enough?
You might, you might say that, I think that I would encourage, and this document is designed to encourage the rollout of 5G.
What did you say Fred Flintstone?
I'm totally against that.
A decent structure.
I think it's a mistake.
All right, any other questions at all about that? I could've dragged Steve down here, he would definitely know more about this than I do, I'll just say that.
And he would've talked for about an hour, but he'd have known better and wouldn't have stumbled through it like I did.
What cost, what cost? Hey, I'm talking to you over here.
What's that Fred Flintstone, what'd you say?
Hi Nick.
One final comment on the 5G, I, I think the biggest part that I was concerned about in, in securing, controlling the right of way was if we didn't have something in place, they could essentially come in and say that they want to put 5G towers on top of our traffic light signals without us really having any say so, and at least with this kind of a documentation, we at least have a pathway forward for them to try and do that.
Yes, it also protects us.
I think it'll probably happen, it's just they're gonna have to prove that the load bearing doesn't cause any structural issues.
And also could put some design standards on it, cause if you go out and look at some, some of the pictures of what they look like. If you don't have a design standard on there, you can have some structures that just get to where they're pretty glaringly ugly. And this is, this isn't gonna make it to where it's not unnoticed, but it will at least provide a little bit more consistent view.
And Jamie said, every twenty-five feet?
They need about every two hundred and fifty feet.
Two hundred and fifty feet, okay.
And if, as you notice in the guideline, it talks about some variance of up to a hundred feet for where, location of poles and, and limitations on the number within a given block face for how many new poles can get put up. Uh, the mast arms is a big deal, a lot of them that you'll see, will put it, put one straight up right at, at the mast arm, not on the beam, but, which looks like it would be appropriate, but if you don't have some regulation to, to go on it, you're gonna get, you don't know what you're gonna get.
And they can't put them underground?
No, no, you need a above-ground tower. One of the things you can talk about is the placement of the boxes and this does, it talks about trying to have vegetation around it to, so it blends in more. If we have a subdivision where we have, require all utilities to be undergrounded, you can require these boxes to be undergrounded in those areas.
Thank you, I think that's the way to go, underground, then they're not subjected to tornadoes and high winds and everything else.
I don't know if you've noticed, we've had a lot of fiber work done lately in town by, you know, I think it's great that it's making connectivity better, but you can't, you can't limit it, you can't control it, they come in and they just, there's, there is so much stuff in the ground in certain places.
Aesthetic, yeah.
To try and do construction in those areas, it would be very difficult moving forward, just because, you know, it would be ideal if you could have one conduit line and have all the fiber lines go in there, but, I mean, they're, they're all over the place in certain locations. So, as, as good as it sounds, it's also, you can't see it when you're digging, so.
Are we groovy?
I'm, I'm good.
Yes.
I'm in, I'm all for quicker technology, despite what Mayor Flintstone says.
Totally against 5G, totally against 5G.
He has a reason for it and I understand what you're saying, it's a health reason, but I, I'm glad we're putting a policy in place so we can regulate it.
We're good? Thanks Nick. Cascade Bridge closure?
As you may know, I, I've been a little frazzled tonight, a little disorganized, I think this is probably the biggest reason for that. Uh, most of my time and attention has gone into thinking about how to one, present this conversation and two, talk about, you know, the reasons why. As you've noticed, my memo says that I recommend closing Cascade Bridge to pedestrian traffic by means of putting a chain link fence across and signage and then also removal of some of the other signage that leads up to it. This, this started back earlier this spring, winter, when we met with Calhoun and Burns, who is our, our bridge inspecting organization that we use. Per DOT, we're required to biannually inspect all the bridges in town. Since the bridge was closed, Cascade Bridge was closed, we have not inspected it. So as we sat down and talked about the other bridges, you know, I asked, what about Cascade, we still have pedestrian traffic that uses that bridge quite frequently. Um, and so that began another conversation about the pedestrian traffic and, and it not being tested for over a decade. Um, and so I had them write me a letter of recommendation on what we do, that was in the packet. And I would like to read from that recommendation, uh, just kind of the considerations that they went through. There's, it opens up with some background and some engineering type conversation. Uh, the conclusions, Cascade Bridge is in poor condition and as such is a safety hazard. Given the age and condition of the structure, it is prudent decision to close the bridge. Due to fracture critical construction of the bridge, sudden failure is a risk. The bridge continues to deteriorate due to environmental conditions. Operating rating of existing bridge is four tons, controlled by a diagonal tension member in span three. Even though the bridge was closed to vehicular traffic, pedestrians continue to traverse the bridge. A four-ton pedestrian load in span three is readily achievable. Gatherings of pedestrians on span three of the bridge may well exceed the operate rating. And so those are the conclusions. The recommendation, as long as the existing Cascade Bridge remains in place at its current location and its current condition, the safety to the public is at risk. It will continue to deteriorate and as such increases the potential for abrupt failure of this critical, or this fracture critical structure. The bridge should remain close to vehicular traffic and pedestrians should be restricted from the bridge. Additional closures should be installed to prevent pedestrians from being able to access the access roadway or sidewalk areas of the bridge. So when we read that, you know, Jesse and I sat down and we talked, you know, we understand that a lot of people use this bridge for, you know, getting in and out of the park on the sidewalks. But I feel like there's a lot, there's a lot of risk out there, should something happen. So that's, that's my recommendation is to, to close the bridge pedestrian traffic. It would require, you know, an action item by the city council and then immediately have a chain link fence put across it with signage, so. I, I don't know what else to present other than, you know, city attorney and I spoke about kind of the risk and liability of letting it remain open with a kind of a report like this given to us, so.
So there, what did they do in order to come up with this conclusion? I mean, it, it, cause when I read it, it doesn't sound like they did a, a complete
No load rating was done on this.
Survey of the bridge, correct?
No, uh, the last time the bridge was inspected was two thousand and eight. Uh, we, we requested or asked what would it take to inspect this so that we, you know, could see if it was, uh, it was, it was like a thirty thousand dollar inspection, it'd have to come up from the bottom and try and inspect that. They said that they wouldn't need it though because of the previous, uh, the previous inspection that had been done on it.
So they're using historical information in order to come to this conclusion eleven years later?
Correct.
Probably could've done it at the, at that time.
In all honesty, based on their recommendation, probably should've been done at that time.
So then my next question is, and I don't, I don't know how the other four people feel up here, but if, if we, if we close the bridge and put a fence up and how much does that really dissolve of, dissolve us of liability? In the event that we know the bridge could fail, um, we know that there's traffic below the bridge. And I'm a firm believer in the fact that no matter what kind of barrier you put up, somebody at some point in time is going to crawl over it. Um, which could create another potential problem. So are we really achieving much there?
You are, you're, you're giving them an obstacle that someone's gonna have to knowingly go above or around to get on the bridge. And I'm not, he might be able to answer this better than I can. You know, Jesse and I, as we talked to it, when he was out at the ammunition plant, they closed several bridges. And what they were told is that you need to make it so that that person knows that that bridge is not accessible and that it can be done by, you know, four-foot chain link fence and signage. I don't know if he has anything to add, but.
Just saying, I don't see how we're gonna be in trouble if somebody climbed a fence that says keep out, you know what I'm saying? I know the society that we live in, people will still sue you even if, whatever, but no, I, I think that would be plenty good, I'm really bummed to hear though that which I know that a lot of people are gonna be disappointed that they can't even walk across it now, you know, but
Any idea what it would cost to demolish in that bridge?
We had a number several years ago of two hundred thousand dollars.
Several years ago being two thousand and eight or several years ago being?
You could probably extrapolate that out at six percent per year.
But when was that estimate?
It was two thousand and eight-ish, I think.
So we'd be talking about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, give or take today. I, I mean.
And there's no feasible way to reinforce, to make it so pedestrians could remain on this bridge?
There, there was a period where they, where city councils had looked at rehabbing the bridge versus replacing it. You know, Chuck Britson, when two thousand and twelve.
It was like twenty twelve, yeah.
Twenty twelve put out kind of an evaluation on it, their basic recommendation was for a replacement rather than rehabilitation. So I guess the question is to what ends, would you like to rehab, rehab it? We haven't investigated as far as what that would mean for, what is a pedestrian safe loading factor and what would you have to do to get to that? So that, that hasn't been talked about, but, you know, given the fact that the rehabilitation wasn't desired for vehicular traffic in two thousand and twelve or earlier. I didn't bring that up for this conversation.
Your rehab costs at the time were in the six and a half million dollar range.
Right.
I'm thinking the current, the current inflated value would be about nine million dollars for a rehab of that structure, if you use the numbers.
Rehab to vehicle use again?
Yes, limited, limited vehicle use, that's not a truck rating.
It was twenty, it was twenty ton.
Yeah.
Right.
And then it was gonna be, if I remember correctly, it was somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a million dollars more to do a complete reconstruction, but the life was half the replacement, I think. Well, the reconstruction was twice as long as a repair.
The rehab was fifty years.
In a higher load rating.
The rehab was fifty years where a new bridge was eighty or longer.
Which is why it didn't make sense to do the rehab, I mean, outside of the historical value and the aesthetic value that the bridge provides, it, it didn't make financial sense to.
At the time, two thousand and twelve, we weren't, we didn't, we weren't doing, after the two thousand and eleven bond issue, two thousand and twelve, we reached, we, we went through two years where we didn't do any construction, we didn't have any borrowing capacity.
So I guess my, in my opinion, if we have to go through the process of closing the bridge, then we need to heavily consider tearing it down, if, if we've come to that point. And, and my, my biggest concern is, um, we can put up a fence and then a ten-year-old kid and his buddies crawl over it or jump over it and, and next thing you know, there's a liability loss as a result of that. Even though we put the fence up, it, to say that we did everything that we possibly could've, when there's additional things that we could've done in order to avoid that risk, I don't think would be necessarily as accurate, so. I mean, I work in insurance, so I, we had a loss a couple of years ago where a guy had a pool, a fence around a pool and a bunch of teenagers went out and were drinking that night and crawled over his fence and crawled into the pool and somebody died and we still paid out. So I, even though we put up a fence, I just don't feel like that liability loss is gonna be there. I'd love to figure out a way to restore it to where at least we can maintain pedestrian traffic, but it doesn't sound like that's even a feasible option, at least not financially. And unless something's changed in the last couple of months, uh, replacement of that bridge is still what, five years away in the twenty twenty-four CIP? I feel like if we continue to let it sit there and then it does fail, if it fails with traffic underneath it, I mean, a lot of people use that area as a trail right of way. I, I just, as much as I don't want to see it go away, I would not want to be a party to keeping it there and then have it fail and somebody get hurt, injured or killed as a result of it.
Nick, I'd like to see us investigate the weight load, I mean, we've had this open for pedestrians for ten years. This real, this news really bites, this hits a lot of citizens really hard. I mean, there are people that want to walk their dogs tomorrow across this bridge and they want to ride their bikes and they want to put their shoes on and walk across it and all of a sudden they're told, okay, in my neighborhood, I can't, I can't walk my dog across this bridge? And they're angry, that's why my phone's been going off, people are mad. So I think we need some type of solution and I don't know just tearing it down or just closing it off, I don't, I don't think that's what the citizens deserve to hear and that's not what they want to hear. I think we need to do something.
What if we were to explore the possibility of removing the existing structure, but then installing a pedestrian bridge? Something that's not load bearing required, it would still provide pedestrian access to the park, but when the funds are available, we could we could add a vehicular structure that would allow vehicular traffic back into the bridge that could complement a pedestrian structure, you know, the bridge we just built, the pedestrian traffic portion of it is tied into the bridge, where if we were to put in a pedestrian structure, granted, I understand that there's a significant cost there, but it's not as much as completely rebuilding the bridge. The, and then five years from now, we get enough money in the CIP to put in another vehicular bridge, that bridge wouldn't necessarily be required to provide be adequate enough for pedestrian traffic. My fear would be that that, because Des Moines did a pedestrian bridge, and shoot, it was, it wasn't, it didn't even cover the span that, that was Cascade Bridge and it was one point five million dollars. What, you're, if you're one point five million dollars, then you might as well commit to go ahead and do the whole bridge and it.
For twelve?
Well, it depends, it, it depends on if you're an iron bridge or cement bridge, not what, everybody's gonna like the cement bridge, but it's gonna be significantly cheaper.
Right, and it's gonna, it's gonna do what we want it to do.
It'd do what we want it to do and so, you know, I mean, you know, I'd love to say in our society that we could say, okay, no more than two pedestrians on the bridge at a time.
Yeah, you can't do that.
But we know no one's gonna follow the rules, so it, you know, I had a chance to review some of the archived articles about when they inspected in two thousand and four and as much as I hate to say it, yeah, we probably should've closed it then. But we've left it open and, uh, I don't use it, but I think it's a great amenity to our city, e- even as a pedestrian bridge. But I just don't know about tearing it down and then building a pedestrian bridge, then building a bridge next to it, I think you're, you're, you're really looking at inflated cost to do that. I mean, but I guess to, to back that up, I mean, something could change that would prohibit us from being able to construct a bridge in twenty twenty-four and now we're even kicking the pedestrian portion of that down the road. Where at least if we were able to come up with some type of pedestrian crossing at that point, uh, or even in just in that general faci- vicinity, it would provide access to all the people that live along the main street corridor, um, to get into the park as they do today. And we wouldn't have to worry about the possibility of it failing, I think regardless, if we close the bridge, we need to look heavily at tearing it down.
Right, so the, the obvious thing is, is that we, from this letter, we have to close it to pedestrian, I mean, really, there's no there's no way around that, I think, but I also think that not having any sort of pedestrian pathway would be disastrous for that park and for the different organizations that use that park. Um, and that may sound dramatic, but I'm thinking about, there's two access points. Basically just one to the, to the ban shell. And there are groups throughout the summer that use that area heavily. Thou- thousands of people go there and even now, it's still, you know, a really great event and people are still able to get there. But if there's only one access point for them to get to there, what does that mean for all that traffic, all those vehicles?
What, have, have we ever explored the possibility in, in some, I'm sure. And, and some, I'm sure there are gonna be people who aren't gonna like this idea. It was just an idea, but have we ever explored the possibility of trying to ca- create vehicular access to the west of where the existing structure sits? And the reason I ask that is the ravine is, is shorter and it's not near as deep, which I believe would equate to less of a cost in order to construct a structure. Have we ever looked at that possibility?
Jesse and I have talked about it, you know, internally about bringing the way Main Street would come through, potentially tying up with Dankworth Drive, you know, putting some sort of a big box culvert at the bottom. It's nothing more than a conversation. There's been no cost estimates, no, you know, survey on data on whether or not you can get the road slopes to be okay. But it would be significantly less, you know, you, that is over prob- part of the deepest part of the ravine and that's part of the difficulty.
That's my point.
And the cost estimate is, is because it's, it's a difficult bridge to reconstruct.
Cause the terrain is so, so rough, right? And because obviously you've got other obstacles, like you do have vehicular traffic underneath of it and, um, there's a creek that runs through there. I mean, so again, I think if we close it, we need to really heavily look at tearing it down, um, as soon as possible. And, um, I would love to explore the possibility of perhaps even more immediately putting at least a pedestrian crossing in there at a much less reduced cost than actually replacing the vehicular traffic. And maybe even exploring the possibility of trying to get some level of vehicular, um, corridor there, but more to the west at a much less at a, a, a more reduced cost than what it would cost to replace the bridge where it stands now.
Jim, I know we have plenty on our plate already and I know, Nick, you have plenty on your plate already. But what would it take for the council to request that that option be looked into?
Which, which option?
A different, um.
The pedestrian?
No, to the west.
To the west.
Uh, you'd, you'd have to do it, you'd have to go through a, at some level of a design on that.
Right.
At, at very least, you'd have to do survey data.
Right, how would we go about requesting that be done in an appropriate manner?
Uh, you're probably gonna wanna.
I know that's a difficult thing.
So if you're talking about that, your, part of that is you're talking about demoing the, the existing structure, not using that existing structure, I assume.
I think we're already.
If you're talking, if you're talking about that, you're gonna get a lot of comments over the next few weeks on a topic such as this. Uh, one of the things that you'll have to do, that's a historical structure. Um, not that you can't demo, uh, the Tama Building was able to do a demolition, uh, partially because the fire had occurred, but they, even if they'd have gone through and saw that there was historic relevant material, they could have done the, done the complete demolition. They would have had to have categorized it and cataloged. They have a certain process for maintaining the historicity of it. So it's a complicated process to go through. You'd, I wouldn't want to, I would hesitate to have you think that you'd wanna look at the feasibility of spending money to get, do a design on, on an alternative location unless you have gone down the road, have gotten the commitments that you are doing the other things that would go on as part of that process, which is the demolition of, of the existing structure.
So you think that would be, uh, like step one would be that commitment?
You have to have all of these working in concert and I mean, could you just, could you look at the alternative?
I just didn't know if.
Yeah, you could ask, uh, Nick and his group to bring in someone to do an evaluation. It's not them. Uh, they don't have the time nor do they have the, they're, they're not the people that have that
No.
knowledge to, to really do that, right?
Survey would probably not be done, you know, with, it'd probably be drone shot.
Right.
Survey data. It'd probably be the easiest to give it to the terrain in there, but you're still talking ten grand.
Just for survey and then to put together a preliminary idea of what the cost would be? I mean, that's not a, that's a ten, maybe ten percent design engineering concept. You're spending a few tens of thousands of dollars doing that. You can do that without committing to any of the other things, but you may have also have used that money and then not gone any, done anything with it.
I guess my, part of my deal is it's where, you know, it's where if we're, as Matt was suggested, and I like the suggestion, but I just don't know about the feasibility of it. Are we absolutely sure there's no materials, nowhere, no way impossible to reinforce that bridge for walk traffic? Cause that's definitely a different load than vehicle traffic. And so because we haven't had a study done and, and now with some of the new technology, you know, I'm just wondering, uh, i- i- are we absolutely sure we've exhausted all avenues to rehab it for traffic? And it, my point would be this, because I talked to someone that's not from the United States originally and he said, we would have rebuilt that bridge three times already in the last ten years reinforcing certain segments of it. Now, wh- whether that's true or not, that, that's the sentiment. But i- are we absolutely sure there's no way to reinforce using new materials, the, the certain structure stress points? And, and because the grading is not as bad, it's the tresses, right? Or I mean, it's the tresses or what the technology.
They have, the different spans have different makeups, I guess I could say. Span three and four, um, are, are different than one and two. I don't have that report in front of me, but.
Okay.
Well, I, so, so I tried to read it as best I could and I came to the conclusion that there are some that they, they alluded to that would, could fail due to load.
Span three.
But, but the one thing that was consistent in the report was the fact that the entire bridge has a significant amount of, what are they, it was rust, but they used a term. It was, uh, anyways, they alluded to the fact that, that most of the joyce, or most of the, the joinery work on the bridge had some type of rust on it that was just gonna continue to, um, to cause other areas become, to become into question as to whether or not they could be contained.
They called it corrosion, Matt?
No, it was, there was a term that was tied to rust that was used that any.
But while you're looking for that, I agree with John. I think we need to make sure we've exhausted all options for pedestrian traffic cause that really is part of the lifeblood of our community. And if people all of a sudden can't walk across that or bike across that, that just really tears at the heartstrings of, of people. So I think we really need to see what it would cost to investigate the weight load.
It was pack rust.
I don't know. I don't have any answers.
To what extent, I guess?
So that we could.
But to what extent?
Well, I'm wondering, have we had any conversations with other, other communities that had a bridge like this? And were there any solutions, lower cost solutions for rehabilitation?
We haven't talked with anybody about with the bridge like this. I don't know anybody that has one.
Okay.
But.
That's my only question. Yeah, I, I, because I, if, if we could reinforce it with an outer structure material or cut, cut parts away and, and put them in, I don't know that. I'm not an engineer. It just seems to me that we haven't made the decision. Uh, Dwayne, do you have a?
Um, we're not, we're not.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
He can address, we just can't comment. Mm-hmm. We just can't comment.
Our attorney's sitting right there. Maybe he can tell us.
If you have, you have the item on the agenda. So to the ex- to the extent that the subject matter of the discussion concerns whether or not to close the bridge, you can have comments. If the subject matter of whether or not to construct a new bridge or any of that else, you'd probably get into pretty far afield. You should probably address that at a subsequent meeting, determine just tonight whether you wanna close the bridge for public safety reasons while you determine these other issues.
Right, I, my suggestion would be if anyone has any additional comments or insight to email.
So Dwayne, does your topic fit in with?
I believe so.
Okay, come on down!
Well, you believe so. I just, I just wanna be painfully clear that, does it pertain to clo- closing the bridge, yes or no? That's basically what.
Can you give, can you provide us with a, um, email that can be, um, where we can share comments?
Yes. And send it to the city council.
That would be the city council.
At BurlingtonIowa.org.
Yeah, so it's citycouncil@BurlingtonIowa.org.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. And that goes to all of us, including, uh, the city manager. I think unless we have any more additional comments or discussions with ourselves.
So the point would be though, in the meantime, we have to decide whether we're gonna close it, even if it's temporarily, you have to close it to traffic. That's what, that's under the advice. So that's what we have to do. But I just don't wanna say, well, okay, we're gonna wait and replace it. I think we ought to investigate some other options. And sometimes those options might incur some costs, but at least discussions to see if it's even viable.
Could we have another discussion item for the next work session to be possible solutions, that sort of thing?
Alternative long-term.
Yes, alternative long-term, alternative.
For the bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As this, as another follow-up discussion item, I think that would maybe solve some issues for tonight's, tonight's discussion. So not that I'm asking you, I, unless we are asking staff to come up with alternatives, I think maybe we should just have it as a discussion because that's gonna take a lot more than two weeks for him to come up with.
Absolutely.
So.
I think, I think the only option we have liability-wise is to close it. I just
Yes.
Think we oughta, we oughta begin some conversation in earnest besides saying, and I'm, I've said it, um, twenty twenty-four, we're gonna look at it. Let's look at it and, and start making, okay, do we want just a pedestrian, are we willing to accept just a pedestrian bridge there? Do we want a traffic bridge there? Do we wanna move it? Do we wanna reinforce it? But we're gonna have to have some discussion about it. We keep kick, not just this council, but kicking the can down the road and that's not coming up with a solution. Sorry, it's just not. Uh, so I, I'd like to, I'd like to have some discussion that way.
Can we put up a sign? Does this protect us if we put up a sign that says weight limit three hundred and fifty pounds or something? Cause I know in Columbus Junction, they have that swinging bridge and it has a sign, something like that.
Back in, back in the seventies, we had a sign that said, no skateboarding on sidewalks. I did it every day. And people, people are people.
I don't think signage alone will protect us from, from this type of liability.
And that's why, and the reasons why I feel it's necessary to have it come down.
So for future discussions, I would like it to be on the next work session for the discussion of alternatives to Cascade.
What about I, action item?
I, I think we, have we come to the conclusion that we have to.
I think action, we don't have a choice. We're gonna have to close it at least for now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I, liability-wise, we're stuck.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
I, I, I agree.
All right, and our, um, I believe last discussion item, we have our appointments. Does anybody have any
No problem.
Issues with appointments? None? Okay. Do we have any, anything else from staff? Eric?
Birthday this Saturday, registration starting at eight at the Port of Burlington. Uh, welcome all to come on down, free lunch afterwards and door prizes, t-shirts for sale.
And they're, they're bright pink, hot pink, right?
Bright pink, yep. They'll stand out, so.
You'll be safe picking up the, the rubbish.
Yeah.
It's my favorite color.
Jim?
I always wear pink. Any com- Nick, did you have anything else? Are you done for tonight?
Yeah, I thought so.
I don't blame you, man. That's a stressful week.
Yeah, you're probably gonna get verbally beat.
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Do we have any, have anything else from our wonderful chiefs? Nothing? Okay. Linda, do you have anything?
Just a reminder that Saturday is the Beaster Bunny five K race at the Recplex. So that's Beaster, B-E-A-S-T-E-R race and the weather's gonna be nice. We were commenting the other day how so many people wait until it's too hot to run or walk. So the temperatures are gonna be perfect. A bunch of us did a race in Lincoln, uh, Springfield, rather, the Lincoln path. And it was forty-six degrees at the start time. It was perfect. So don't wait until it's too hot to lace up those shoes, come on out and enjoy the Beaster Bunny this weekend at the Recplex. And I think downtown open house is coming up. Is that this weekend?
Yes, I believe.
So get ready for that downtown open house. There's some specials going on.
Oh, this, yeah, this week is radio for the, for us. So does anybody wanna do it?
I think I can do it.
Do you wanna do it with Matt? I don't care. You want it, Matt? You'll be, I don't care.
You guys duke it out.
No, I'm, unless somebody else wants it. It's just, I'll take it. If nobody wants it, if, I'd love to give it up though if somebody else wants it.
Do you want, you wanna do it?
I might try it.
Okay.
Okay.
You and, you and Linda then.
Okay.
Okay.
Linda and Matt are gonna be on the radio.
Just cause I gotta spend an hour with David Hightower.
So, uh, the only thing I have, uh, is I'm taking off my city council hat for a moment and I just wanna thank the city staff, uh, as an employee of Bluff Harbor Marina during this flooding season. Uh, found the staff very agreeable, trying to work with us to allow us to remain in business and operate. So hats off to Jim and your, your people. We really, really appreciate it. I mean, if I had a barricade issue, they dealt with it, uh, needed some storage area and they've dealt with it. And I think the city has done a great job trying to be ahead of the flood, which is better than our federal government has been. So excellent work, guys and girls. Appreciate it.
Do you have anything?
No.
No? Uh, the only thing I have is just to get out there and enjoy our local baseball team while they're here. In fact, they probably just started six minutes ago on the game tonight. They're here until, I believe Thursday is their last home game for this week and then they're out of town and back again, so. That's all I have. If, uh, Moon has anything else? That's it. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your patience.